Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lexington City Council meeting for June, January 2nd. Testing to see who's listening there. Is this thing on? Before we start and before I call the meeting to order, I want to remind everyone that public comments are always welcome. I invite you to sign up prior to our meeting. We have a signup sheet over here. I will recognize those signed up during the citizens remarks section of city council's agenda. And during this agenda item, I ask that the following guidelines be followed. Once recognized by the mayor, please stand at the podium and for the record state your name. And if you are a resident of Lexington, Virginia, and if you wish to be contacted after the meeting, please provide your contact information to our clerk Jenny Hostetter. We ask that you make your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage the audience. Ask that you be brief, state your position and provide facts. If you have written statements or supporting materials, please provide them to the clerk for distribution to the city council and the mayor and the city manager. Debate is prohibited, and we ask that you speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. Council allows three minutes to each speaker and individuals may not yield their allotted time to another person. And if you represent a group, you're allotted five minutes and you're invited to identify other members of you are invited to identify other members of your group who are in attendance. I remind us all that the city council meetings are formal proceedings and are recorded. And with that, I would like to officially call the meeting to order. And the first item of business, if you all will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes or modifications, no requests for a closed session or any ways to extend the meeting. Offer no proclamations this evening other than proclaiming that I hope everyone will thrive in 2025 as we embrace the new year. Next item is presentations, the recovery court funding request from Commonwealth attorney Josh Elrod. Mr. Elrod, please step up. Welcome back and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you all giving me some time tonight to make this request. Since some material which I think Mr. Carroll probably forwarded to you. And I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, but I'm glad to take any questions that you all may have. For about the past year and a half or so, a committee of individuals who are associated with the criminal justice system and also substance use treatment disorder in our community have been working to establish a recovery court here. And you may know recovery court by the more common name that's been used for decades, drug court. Starting thinking early 2024, both nationally and in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the nomenclature changed. So now we use the term recovery court. But it's the same concept and it is a kind of a modality of treatment and a modality of criminal justice that has been operating in the United States. I believe since the late 1980s, early 1990s, first started, I think in Palm Beach, Florida. And it's spread nationally and it's spread across the Commonwealth of Virginia. And currently there are recovery courts operating in Allegheny County, in Bodatack County, in Augusta County, Stanton, Waynesboro. I believe on the other side of the mountain too. I know I think in Amherst, Lynchburg. At any rate, very widespread across Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's a tried and tested method. One of the things that we had the advantage of as we were preparing this is that both again nationally and within the Commonwealth of Virginia, people have been gathering data on this and found that it is one of the most effective ways to get certain classes of people through recovery. It's also one of the most cost-effective ways to do criminal justice. And I'm a Commonwealth's attorney and I feel like as I wake up every day, the first order of business is kind of making sure the community is safe. And I think one of the other things to keep in mind as you're considering this is that community safety is also one of the biggest pieces of the puzzle as we put this together. So this is not a kind of a, you know, go easy on people who are criminals program. It's a program that's built on stringent oversight and really intensive supervision. About a month ago, actually a month from tomorrow ago, the Virginia Supreme Court approved our application to operate a court. They have to do that because although this is a what's called a specialty docket, it is still a branch of the judiciary for the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so we have to have permission from the Supreme Court to operate. And we achieve that. That doesn't give us a defined starting date, but it does allow us to go forward when we're ready. One of the last pieces of the puzzle that we have is a funding a paid position. Again, there may be more questions about this, but trying to get through it briefly. The court, as we have put it together and is pretty typical, has one full-time paid position. That person is the coordinator. They also are in charge of supervision, which means that they do a couple of things. One is that they are sort of the liaison between the judge and the treatment team. And they are also the case manager and supervisor for the participants, which is the name that we give to the people who are participating in the program. And those people are going to come in and meet with that coordinator on a weekly basis. They're going to come into court and stand before the judge on a weekly basis. And that person is going to coordinate kind of a report to the judge about how much treatment this person has done, what progress they've made with other measures that we've set out. And right now we're looking to fund this position. And we've made a request to Rockbridge County, which they have indicated that they're going to grant for this year. I think in the neighborhood of about $50,000 toward this coordinator position. And what we're asking for, for the total for that position, I think is about $76,000, $77,000. And I apologize, but I think the numbers are are in the paper there. And we're asking the city of Lexington to consider allocating $13,000 basically for the current year. We would hope to get somebody hired and ideally be up and running by April 1st. And I realize this is a sort of a short timetable for you all and a request that, you know, ask you all to turn this around quickly. And I don't have much sort of excuse for that, except to say that it's been a matter of kind of putting pieces in place. And until we had that authorization from the Supreme Court or thought we were going to get that and we're close to it, it was hard to know exactly what this request was going to look like. But that's what I'm asking you all to consider doing. There's going to be a pretty much similar request for the city of Buena Vista. I hope that this will come out of your OAA funds. We did go through a process and I'm glad to try to answer some questions about that. When we went forward with this request in the county about exactly how these fit the OAA requirements. And we're really confident that they do. And if there's any question about that, I may have to provide some follow-up, but I'm glad to do that because we feel confident that these meet the requirements that the authority sets out. So I'm sorry, I ran through that really quickly, but it may be easier to just ask if there are any questions at this point.
Members, council have any questions? Mr. Betts.
Where where will the cases be heard?
So the court is actually going to convene Rockbridge County Circuit Court. Judge Christopher Russell, who's the presiding judge there and in Buena Vista, has agreed to hear these cases. And and that is where we will convene, but as you probably realize that this will serve the jurisdiction of Buena Vista as well, even though we got a separate courthouse.
And Bath as well.
Or not Bath County. Bath County actually made an application to be included in the Allegheny County Recovery Court. And it was, they were there, Ingrid Barber, who was there from their community service was at the Supreme Court Committee the same day I was there and they were making that request. But again, it's just great evidence about how popular this program is that Bath County is trying to get people into the Allegheny program.
Thanks.
Ms. Strong.
So do the participants, do they have, they have the opportunity to have their jail sentence waived in lieu of going to treatment, recovery?
So they they do potentially. The the way that someone enters the court is that, one, they have to be interested in doing it. And the Commonwealth attorney has to concur and and the defense counsel has to concur and then the judge has to concur. And those are really kind of the same three legs of a stool that would have to commit to any kind of plea agreement. And somebody who's charged with typical possession of a schedule one or two drug like methamphetamine or cocaine or heroin or fentanyl, you know, may or may not face jail time as a realistic possibility in any event. But if they do, because they have a prior record, because they have other charges that are under advisement or where they're on probation already. Then if the Commonwealth attorney agrees, defense counsel and the judge all agree that if a person is successful going through recovery court, that their jail sentence may be reduced or even maybe more likely suspended in its entirety, then that could happen. And and I just want to take your question to to point out one more thing that I think the more I talk to people who are involved in these courts, you know, the more I hear is that for a large number of people who go through the criminal justice system, they'd be glad to take a little bit of jail time rather than go through the recovery court because it's so intensive. And it's very well designed for people who are interested in recovery, which is not something people just voluntarily choose and then they stop using drugs. They they need a lot of help. There are a lot of kind of levers involved and and the criminal justice levers are part of that. So to answer your question, yes, a jail sentence could be suspended.
And and right now in jail, there is no recovery program within in the jail system itself.
There are some treatment options that are available. They are limited and because somebody who is in a jail doesn't necessarily have control over where they stay, they might be moved into the Department of Corrections custody from a local jail, move from one local jail to another. Their term in jail may end. There's, there's, I would say a significantly less, a significantly smaller degree of kind of certainty and uniformity about the kind of treatment that they receive. And what we really look to do in recovery court, and this is a little bit of a change in the past, maybe five years, but is to really integrate people with supports that are naturally out there in the community. And the idea I think is that it creates a more sustainable recovery. There are a lot of people who, you know, while they are incarcerated, do pretty well. I mean, they don't take drugs for the most part. It's a terrible thing to say, but sometimes there are drugs even in secured facilities. But for the most part, people who are incarcerated are not actively using drugs. When people come back out into the community, there is this very delicate handoff of people reestablishing themselves, you know, into a life that they're going to live every day. And at some point, those supports are going to be pulled back, like taking the scaffolding off a building. And what we really want is somebody who has, you know, built up a life that is going to sustain them outside of this addiction that they're suffering from. And there's a lot, I could go on too long, but there is a lot in what we're going to try to do and what this court is designed to do that really speaks to that.
So based on everything you just told us, to what to what degree does the drug court reduce recidivism for those facing drug offenses for the first time, second time, third time?
You're going to have to forgive me. I've been working on this a long time and it's been a little while since I've looked at all the statistics. So I can't, I can't reel off the exact numbers, recidivism, but they are widely available. And I'd be glad to follow up with you on those. What I would point you to is the Supreme Court's website. And the Virginia court system and anybody who's listening to this or you know, wants to look at home, vi courts.gov. And within the Supreme Court's website, they have a link to their recovery court program. And by statute and by design, there are some pretty intensive reporting requirements for these programs. And it's part of the reason I think that the court, you know, maintains that these programs need to be proved and recognized by the Supreme Court of Virginia. And they put out an annual report as well as I think it was a five-year report and a lot of those figures are there. And the the takeaway, which I can tell you with a lot of confidence is that the numbers are significantly better than people who are in incarceration for the same basically controlled populations. They're even better for people who don't fully graduate from the recovery court and not everybody will make it through. But even people who have been in the recovery court for, say, three or six months actually have better recidivism numbers, that is lower recidivism numbers than people who are incarcerated generally. And it costs less, it costs less for the community. It'll cost less for Lexington. It will cost less for the Commonwealth of Virginia.
What's the average term of service in in recovery court for for those that participate?
About 12 to 18 months. People need to hit a certain number of benchmarks through five phases. And so it's not an exact number, but it's designed to run between 12 and 18 months.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I I am overjoyed to hear that we're finally going to get drug court. It's been going around county by county localities for a while and there have been some great successes as a result. I used to serve on grand jury there for a while. It just seemed like I got called constantly. And and from those experiences, I realized that this area has a a real drug problem. And the results were, you know, in the courts. And when it was back in 23, that the talk about the Hope House recovery was started. And in doing my research, I found out in Lexington and Rockbridge and about this time in 2023, there had already been 522 cases in the two previous years that were felony cases. Thirty-six percent of them were drug cases. And you look at those numbers and the impact that it has on families, the economy. In every aspect of a community, it has a negative effect. And to see the progress, and it might be slow progress, but then every little bit helps in the long run. To see that happening finally in Lexington, Rockbridge, Buena Vista, it's 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 going to be a real positive impact on the community, I think.
Yeah, I I really appreciate that. And the support that has kind of come around this program from all the people who have helped kind of get it together has been really inspiring and encouraging and community services. Commonwealth attorney here in Lexington, Rockbridge County, Jared Moon, judge, defense counsel. Everybody is very enthusiastic about working on this and even individuals who who weren't necessarily or aren't going to be necessarily directly involved, the Community Health Center in Carillion. For example, have been really supportive. And I think that's because what you're saying, even though and maybe because of the stigma attached, sometimes substance use disorder. Surprising to say it's sort of not as well recognized as the problem that it is, unless you start to look at the numbers like you saw on grand jury. But a lot of people see that the problem is there and so they're very excited about anything we can do to kind of make it better.
Exactly. When funding this position and the need to have the 77, 78,000 to fund it. And it looked like the county was providing some additional funds for operating expenses, so to speak. Is is that enough, do you think? Or will that person be able to work out of the county courthouse and utilize the phone system? And would they not have to pay any part of the operating of the building?
That's, that's a great question. We've been really fortunate to work really closely with Blue Ridge Court Services. Now that may be an organization you're familiar with, but not everybody. Maybe Blue Ridge Court Services operates our pre-trial supervision program. And they were founded in the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro area and kind of expanded to include Rockbridge County, Lexington and Buena Vista in their catchment area. They also perform the coordinator position for the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Recovery Court. And they, I think they have been a great partner in kind of our criminal justice process. Their executive director, Megan Roan, is on our advisory committee. I've worked really closely with her. And they have an office here in Lexington. It's on Main Street. Again, you may be familiar with where that is, but it's just sort of next door to McAdoo's, between McAdoo's, I guess, and and Napa Thai. But they have a office there that is going to be available and they will basically be they will basically be the employer for this individual. And that is a little unusual, but it's what we already do for pre-trial services. They have pre-trial services workers who just serve our area, but they operate out of that office. And so a lot of that is in place, but Megan helped putting together kind of this budget and and we think this is going to be sufficient. Again, to stand up the court for the first year. We also anticipate seeking some donations for some of the incentives that we give to participants. There are certain benchmarks. And if somebody, you know, achieves a certain number of days of sobriety, we may want to give them a small gift certificate or a free movie pass or something like that. And we we anticipate looking in the community for some of those kind of things. But we're hopeful that in terms of the, you know, the major cost of operating a recovery court in the first year, this is going to be what it's going to cost. Final thing I'll say about that is that there are a lot of people who are Final thing I'll say about that is that there are, there are a lot of people who are making in-kind, essentially in-kind, you know, donations of their time to this. And, and this is part of my job, so I don't, don't mean this to sound the wrong way, but you know, I'm going to devote my time to come over here and take a separate court docket. The judge is going to do the same thing. He's going to take some of his time to do that. Jared Moon, Defense Bar. But I, I would be remiss in not saying that, for instance, the Rockbridge Community Service is undertaking a fairly significant project to start something called sorry, intensive outpatient recovery, which is a certified treatment modality that is, you know, fairly significant undertaking for them. I think it was something they were working on anyway, and so it's sort of dovetailed with what we're doing. But, you know, they, they have kind of stepped up and, and done that. So there are other costs associated with the court. But at this point, we're really not asking the localities to bear any of those.
Thank you.
Other questions? You mentioned Blue Ridge Court Services. Is that different from Blue Ridge Legal Services?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Just make, just, just making sure. And relative, this will be a state funded position with VRS and what have you, but will be a agency? Hire, ultimately, who will the individual report to or who will have managerial responsibilities?
Blue Ridge Court Services and Megan Roan, as I said, is the executive director. To get into the, the nitty gritty, they are actually paid by the city of Stanton. And this is, I have a little bit of a hard time getting my head around it, but we went through this with the county. Everybody who, you know, had to write checks and sign checks and agree on this kind of thing, seemed to think that it would work. There's actually going to be a payment where the county is concerned to the Community Foundation for Rockbridge Bath, Allegheny Island. Am I saying that in the right order? The, the Community Foundation, which is then going to pass the funds through to the city of Stanton, who in turn is going to pay Blue Ridge Court Services to employ this person. And I probably made it more, sound more complicated than it needs to. But that is the way that it's being done. And I, again, I can try to answer more questions.
I appreciate the transparency. Just when VRS showed up there, it seemed like it would definitely be an employee of a municipality. But it's not, but it's okay. There's trust it's being all, all done on the up and up. And the collaboration is really what makes this effective to, to be able to move forward. The memo from the city manager reflected no action tonight. Identified, we have funds in our opioid account, if you will, and expect more. And I don't hear any objections from members of council at what's being recommended. So where we won't be taking action tonight, look forward to supporting the endeavors going forward.
I appreciate that. And if anything else, you know, is needed or you all want to hear anything else from about other aspects, the quarter questions I couldn't answer, I'm glad to.
And, and just appreciate your time, appreciate your work on this. I know this has been an initiative of yours for, for many years, but after FY26, after FY27, what do we see as the funding stream to support this position? Will it be proportional? For as far as how many residents from each jurisdiction are using the program? I know that the Virginia opioid abatement authority has provided tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands to other recovery courts in the valley. Will we be making application to the Virginia opioid authority for some of their funds? Like Rockingham County has and like, you know, other, other areas have. So I just, as we get to the FY28 budget, where will we, what, what are we looking at? Because I think we've enjoyed being able to support Hope House. This is another very important viable entity that deserves some of these opioid abatement funds, but I just want to make sure that we're turning over every stone for dollars.
Right. And, and our hope is actually, excuse me, to seek funding for a number of years outside the jurisdictions. There, there's actually a lot of funding out there that is available, available, excuse me, for programs like this, including at the state level. And some other courts in our jurisdiction have had what are almost like indefinitely recurring grants through the Supreme Court of Virginia. And the state legislature has allocated some funds that we hope might be available for continuing grant to support this position. I think the, you know, I think the, the smart thought about grants is they're, they're good until they're not, or they go on until they don't. So we can't guarantee that forever, but there certainly seems to be reason to believe that there will be funds outside the community to stand this program up for quite a number of years. But what is also sort of typical with these programs is that the people overseeing these larger grants like to see community investment and they like to see a program that stood up and running before they write a big check. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Very good. Mr. Alrod, thanks for joining us. Thanks for your work in the community and collaboration associated with this. And we look forward to supporting your efforts and welcome to come back and report on anytime.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for consideration to allow portions of the Bank of the James Building at 45 South Main Street to be used as an educational facility. Now call in city planner.
Prior to Arnie giving a presentation, I'll just disclose that in accordance with Virginia code subsection 2.2-3112A and B and 2.23115H, I declare that I have a personal interest in the City of Lexington Council consideration of the CUP 2025-01 because of my employment with VMI. In this instance, the VMI alumni agencies seeks approval for a conditional use permit, 45 South Main Street that will authorize an administrative facility associated with VMI. I am not disqualified from participating in this transaction because I'm a member of a group of three or more who are affected by the transaction and I can participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thanks, sir. Proceed.
Good evening to you all and happy new year. We do have a request for a conditional use permit for an educational facility, college, university. And as you know from previous experience, that this type of facility is a conditional use in the C1 zoning district. On bottom of, or the second part of your packet, we have the, the definition there and the administrative facility portion is underlined. So this term includes academic buildings, administrative facilities, dormitories, special housing, et cetera. So any administrative facility is related to VMI requires a conditional use permit in C1 zoning district. Over on the third page of your packet, we always have your conditions for issuance. So the criteria for your review of a conditional use permit, we always request that you support your decision verbally with these criteria. As an example, the first one out of the four, A through D, does not adversely affect the health safety of persons residing and working in the area. C as an example, does not conflict with policies and principles of the adopted comprehensive plan. In the staff recommendation, we do have staff recommended, recommendation for approval with two conditions for your consideration. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the 12th of December and they approved a motion with a recommendation for approval with the two staff recommended conditions. We do have a suggested motion for you there. And I have not received any comments either for or against in response to the advertisements for this public hearing. And we also have the draft planning commission minutes for your consideration there at the end of the packet. Have to answer any questions.
Members of council, have any questions for staff? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Not aware of anyone that signed up to speak to this item, but if there's anyone who would like to speak to this item, please wave your hand to be recognized. Daryl? Did you want to speak to this public hearing of this particular? Yes, no. Oh, no, you're, you're, you're fine. I just wanted to make sure. I knew you want, I, I knew you wanted to, I knew you wanted to speak about the speed in front of rats. Right now is not the time.
Oh, okay.
So, okay. Now, this is just related to this, this building. Seeing no one that wants to speak to this item on the agenda, I'll close the public hearing at 7:32 and ask for council's consideration and discussion.
It's an underutilized space right now, and I think it's good use of the space to have it used as offices.
I think there is also some consideration of parking in the application, talking about parking in the parking garage and sounds like there was some thought that went into that.
With that, I'll move to approve conditional use permit number CUP 2025-01 to allow a portion of the Bank of the James Building, tax map number 23-1-82 to be used for administrative facilities related to the educational facility, college/university use with the two staff recommended conditions.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
No discussion, but an observation. I, I think it's interesting to note that the the opposition to this is very, very quiet versus the opposition to the Washington and Lee permit. I regard them as identical permits and I'm just having a, a hard time understanding why there's no opposition to this and so much opposition to the other. I'm not a, just an observation, not a, not a comment, but I think it's worth noting.
Personally, I like the, the comments about parking. I thought it was good. They thought about where people are going to park.
But that was temporary, does help.
Those were all issues that were discussed in the planning commission. And the fact that the applicant proactively mentioned how many people would be working in the facility. And secondly, address the parking issue and the fact that it was temporary. I think that's one thing that
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the question about opposition wasn't directed to councils, directed to the general, general office.
Maybe the holidays.
To clarify.
Also, I think it's worth noting that the second condition with this recommendation and the motion is for a limited conditional use, which is contrary to our policy where we typically don't have a term on conditional use, correct? So that's, that's something unique and we're responding to the applicant from that standpoint. Just note, notating that it's different than how we generally approach because conditional use permits, a permit is allowed for a space or it is not from that standpoint. So just an observation as well. Unless there's any other discussion, I ask for a roll call vote and call Mr. Betts, Mr. Schmidt.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander? Mr. Distical?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And happy construction for alumni agencies on Main Street, working with one of our businesses. Glad that space will be better utilized and energized. You're going to love it. Next item on the agenda is citizens' remarks and comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize, Daryl, come on up. And we'll remind you, please state your name and whether or not you're resident of the City of Lexington of Virginia.
Yes, sir. My name is Daryl Lafave. I'm an independent minister. I live at One Campbell Lane in Lexington. My concern is the amount of speed that people drive into VMI and out of VMI. I walk my dog twice a day. People don't pay no nevermind to the crosswalk. I have written my concern to your website and the officer had called me on December 2nd. And I was really excited. I said, great, we can do something about this, but not much has been done. He told me they were shorthanded. They only had one speed monitor trailer. And I said, can't the city put up a speed camera? Like the big cities do, send a ticket through the mail. And he had made the comment that there was a watchdog group. And kind of puts a kibosh on that. I don't know, but I think that something needs to be done. When the speed limit's 25, they're doing 40, 50, coming across East Lexington Bridge into past rats. Don't slow down. I carry a little stop sign and stick it out in front of the traffic to stop them because they're oblivious to the crosswalk signs. And that's in both directions. Yeah, I get some dirty looks and yeah, there's been some almost rear ends. One lady was playing on her phone and almost hit the guy in front of her, but I can't control what the drivers are doing. Alls I can do is copy what a lawyer just said about community safety. And that we need to do something and be able to help those. We have VMI students, you have joggers, you have young people running across there all the time. And I don't know how much time I got left, but something needs to be done. And I, as I said earlier, I'm a rookie. I think this is great to be up here to voice my concern. But I'm going to put this on there last. At the end of the Christmas parade, you know as well as I know, if you've been there, all the traffic follows that last vehicle. And my wife and I walked down with our dog and we crossed over and we're walking back. And this, and the crosswalk right before the Baptist church or right before Pure Eats, nobody would stop and let the crowd cross. And finally, a lady had stopped. And like three people walked up to her and thanked her so much. And we're over there going, yeah, woo-hoo, because it's how hard is it to stop? Okay. And it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. So if they're doing 25 and I step out in front of them, they should be able to stop, no problem. And I even Googled your ordinance to make sure. And we do have the right of way. Okay. And it even says if I'm on the other lane crossing over, they're supposed to stop and give me the right of way. So that's my concern. Okay. Community safety. I know the people at Rats know that it's dangerous. When the officer called me on December 2nd and we had that conversation, he said I was right about everything I spoke of. So I'm just asking help. Do what we can. If you need more speed trailers, there's up in Broadway, there's a thing on the yard sale page. They have speed trailers for sale for $700. And I think that it would be a good investment for the city if you've only got one. And it's a citywide 25 mile an hour speed limit. Either put lights around it because they're oblivious. They just, how much time do I got left?
None. None.
Is that what she was waving?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a happy new year and this is a blast.
Daryl, thank you. Appreciate your enthusiasm and we understand your concern. And ask the city manager to follow up with you. You all get connected. It's where the rubber meets the road. That can implement some policies and/or actions to help slow the traffic coming into town.
I really do appreciate it. Do I leave her my contact information?
That'd be perfect.
Afterwards.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. You did a great, great job on your first time. You're welcome anytime. Next item on the agenda is boards and commissions. Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
Uh, no report.
Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith.
Hope everyone had fun at the New Year's Eve ball drop celebration. It was a hugely successful event. And that's about all to talk about this evening about Main Street Lexington.
Very good. Things perking along for new executive director or anything to report there?
No.
And huge thanks to the Benacasa family for the ball and the idea of closing the street and having the New York City style ball drop on Main Street of Lexington. Very grateful for their community enthusiasm. We don't have a report for Mr. Alligood. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong?
No report.
Very good. Mr. Betts?
No report other than to say the lease negotiations continue. Jeremy's been working with Cheryl and it's pretty much all I have to report on that.
As long as we're still talking, we're not moving out. Good work. Raro, Mr. Ziegler?
No report.
And Threshold, Ms. Alexander? And Threshold, Ms. Alexander?
No report.
Very good. Uh, from my report, uh, very briefly, I'll remind you that, uh, because of, uh, Mr. Driscoll's success in his city council election, uh, we now have vacancy on planning. Uh, don't know of any applications that we receive, but if you know folks that, uh, have an interest and would like to serve our community, um, we do have an opening on the planning commission. And, uh, be remiss if, uh, didn't acknowledge and welcome any other comments from council members, but, um, uh, with Jimmy Carter's passing last week at one hundred years old, um, certainly was a, a model of, um, uh, um, service above self and, uh, creating and doing many, many, uh, successful projects. Uh, none, uh, more significant than Habitat for Humanity. And, um, just, uh, re- reflect on his service and something we can all aspire to, but, uh, would welcome if council members have any comments and reflections.
I found a quote that might be pretty appropriate for today's times. And it's a quote from his, uh, nineteen seventy five book, Why Not the Best? It says, "We have a tendency to exalt ourselves and to dwell on the weaknesses and mistakes of others. I have come to realize that in every person, there is something fine and pure and noble, along with a desire for self fulfillment. Political and religious leaders must attempt to provide a society within which these human attributes can be nurtured and enhanced." Jimmy Carter.
One thing that I noticed, um, with the passing of Jimmy Carter was that people from across the political spectrum were able to come together and say positive things, um, about, uh, President Carter. And I think that's something that's really important in this day and age and of increased political polarization is that, uh, we try to remember the good that people did in the work, uh, in the world, um, regardless of, uh, you know, where they may sit on one issue or another, trying to look at, you know, people's legacy as a whole and remember the positive they did for this country, uh, like President Carter did.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much. Um, truly remarkable, uh, farmer from peanut farmer from Georgia, uh, rise to, uh, presidency. Um, that's all I have for my report, and I'll call the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year. Uh, on behalf of my coworkers, uh, report will be very brief. Uh, I appreciate all the time and attention the council has, uh, provided, providing some responses to our, prepare for our goal setting session, which will be on Saturday, January eleventh. Uh, Janie and I tend, uh, intend to get a packet out, uh, for that tomorrow. Uh, and, and I will have some additional questions and sharing the feedback that you all have provided with each other a- as well as, uh, from senior leadership team. So happy to answer any questions about that or other topics.
Members, council, have any questions? January eleventh?
Is that at City Hall?
Change Your Life. Uh, it's currently, uh, um, planned to be at the police station. We, we may find an alternate location. If we do, I will let you know.
I did have one question about, there's no, there's no meeting on the eighteenth. Is that, is that right? Of January anymore? Okay.
There is the potential for a, a, a January joint meeting on the thirtieth with Buena Vista and Rockbridge County. We're opening bids for the DSS project on the seventeenth of January. So a- all the jurisdictions have been asked to reserve that evening, the thirtieth.
But nothing at this time on the eighteenth?
Nothing on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. City attorneys report.
Only thing to mention, Mr. Mayor, after last meeting, I did work with the, uh, Rockbridge County attorney to file the petition seeking the writ of election for the sheriff. I've not heard from John yet whether that has been entered, but I will follow up. I do know the petition was filed. Other than that, nothing to report and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none. Uh, next item is new business. Consideration of the proposed Rockbridge Area Community Services Board membership reduction and bylaws change. Now calling city manager for introduction to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the current configuration of the community service board includes, uh, fifteen board members. Uh, it includes representation from Rockbridge County, uh, Buena Vista, Lexington, and Bath County, all of which participate in, uh, the CSB. Uh, fifteen members of a board can be a bit unwieldy. Uh, it's a lot of members. It's a lot of schedules to coordinate. Um, it, it's worked, but it, it can be a bit unwieldy and cumbersome for the convening of meetings and establishment of quorum, that sort of, uh, just ministerial burden. And so Kim Shaw, the executive director for the CSB, uh, has asked all four jurisdictions to consider changing the composition of the board to a ten-member board. Um, I know it's unusual to have an even number of board members, but that ten-person board structure does allow for, uh, a reduction from fifteen to ten and keep relatively similar proportions of representation from the respective jurisdictions. So this resolution tonight, uh, is, is, would be your opportunity to endorse this. Um, Rockbridge County has already endorsed it. Um, my understanding is Bath County has, uh, effectively implemented it by not replacing one of their board members. I, I think they still will have to take some sort of formal action, uh, to approve changes to the bylaws, uh, and, and we would effectively move from three board members representing Lexington to, and we would reduce the, uh, representation from Lexington through normal expiration of terms. Um, I've discussed this with, uh, Kim Shaw, with colleagues at city of Buena Vista and Rockbridge County, and, and administratively, we're all in support of this. Happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have.
Members, council, have any questions regarding this?
When, when will the, uh, change, I guess, fully take effect? Is there, is there, uh, is there, uh, estimated date on that at all?
I don't have that date. Uh, we're the second entity to act unless Bu- Buena Vista may have acted on it earlier this evening, or they might be addressing it on, on the sixteenth. I'm just, I'm not sure. But the effectiveness will be after all jurisdictions participating have taken the action that's before you tonight, assuming it's in the affirmative.
Yeah, I think for the resolution, it was in twenty twenty five. So as people, uh, may, uh, roll, roll off.
And I guess that's what I was kind of wondering. I don't know if there's an exact answer to that. I, I didn't know if it'd be done by twenty seven or twenty eight or any, I don't know if there's an exact answer to that, but just curious, but not. It's okay.
Yeah.
So the county would have four, Bath would have one, Lexington two, Buena Vista three.
If I bring you Bath, Lexington would be the best one, too, right?
That's right. Two.
Yeah, that's right.
BD will lose one?
Uh, Buena Vista will, will lose one as well. Yeah, as will Bath County. So, uh, the, the three entities that have smaller populations in Rockbridge will go from three members to, to two members.
Okay.
And Rockbridge will go from six members to four members for a total of ten, or from Rockbridge to from Lexington, Buena Vista, and Bath County each.
Um, with that, um, I'll remind you that, uh, we, our three members are Len, Dan, and Cola, Mike Gilmore, and, uh, Dr. James Gira are currently serving. And, um, I believe, uh, Dr. Gira, um, is not planning to continue to serve. So he may be our first, um, reduction, if you will. Um, Mike and Len are, uh, active, uh, members and participating. Just FYI.
And I guess when, a little bit aside from the resolution, but I guess that you have to have a third. I think of the members have to have used the services or have some familiarity. Who does the, who regulates that or makes sure that's happening? Does each locality use one of their seats that way, or does, uh, Kim kind of organize that?
I think technically Kim manages that process. And so if it's somebody that doesn't have any experience and we need someone, she'll let us know. We need someone who, who's, uh, used the services. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
I would, uh, welcome council's consideration for this with the recommendation offered by the city manager.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty two, twenty twenty five dash oh one, a resolution to authorize the Rockbridge Area Community Services Board to reduce its size from fifteen to ten members.
Second?
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, a roll call vote. Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Betts?
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler?
Hi.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And, uh, I know that, uh, Kim appreciates, uh, your support with that as well. It's something she's been working on for a while to, uh, ma- manage the process a little bit more efficiently. Uh, I'm not aware of any other information or business to come before the council this evening. And unless there's any objection, we will stand adjourned. We are adjourned at seven fifty two.